All the order, the county council meeting for May thirteen. Our nine AM ED from ED that six PM here in Austin. Uh, we have um. On the comment, Henry Smith here from the Gaines River.
Yes, it was a little over here, maybe the age of twenty-three, I was here. Taking for the rebuild, the repair of the gates mouth covered fridge. And he passed a motion of one hundred eighty thousand from the human bridge fund and the Q of capital development. Since that time. We had. Engineering term, Hootsall Baker, who are experts. Much experience with wooden covered bridges like the specs according to the Indiana public doing process. Of course, the. Engineering estimate went up a little less summer as you'd expect with inflation. We we knew we could cover that. In October. We had put the specs out for bid in November. We opened the bids, the low bid was much over. Our engineering estimate, which seems to be typical these days. So we did negotiate with Emily drop. Paint the bridge, some fire retardant. And some railing work that will hopefully be able to finance later. And then we were able from by public public support raised sixty-five thousand dollars. So that we could do the project. In March, our group met with um. System structural systems repair group, SSRG out of Cincinnati, Ohio. The sixth hope better. We met with them in March. Met their sign and project engineer, their two safety people were there. Superintendent with the repair group is there and we spent about two hours going over the project. In March. In April, they submitted their structural. The port plans to our engineering group console and Baker. And they approved how they were going to support the bridges and replace the wooden. Structure. That both ends plus the portals. So unless there's severe weather. Rain and floods secrete, we hope to begin the actual repair work. In June, so in that contract or still be progressive payments, so. Maybe in June or July, we'll be coming to the county under their support funding. So. But it's been. Last year. Kind of a struggle, but looks like we're about ready to finally repair it after five years of favorizing it and. Raising the money. So there's any questions?
Um, Henry, I don't have those figures written down, and I know I've given you the the. Two years ago, we did the Cume Bridge tax, we we increased it point oh oh five. To go towards the cover of bridges. And I'm gonna give you the figures, I don't know how much is in there right now.
Well, through the end of last year was a hundred and forty thousand, and then. With this year's tax money, the top of grades forty-five to fifty thousand.
Okay, and we will know at least. How much is raised at the May payment.
Right.
Then. Now. And that's just. Cume Bridge, because there is a coverage, but I don't know what.
Thirty thousand.
Yes. So. You know, I might not really get into the Cume.
Right.
Well, well, now if I need. It's more than we see others.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I really appreciate your support. We'll work hard to make. County proud of the judges.
Thanks, Henry. Uh, she's got that here, concerned citizens, anyone? Here to speak. Yeah.
Things that we've been on there.
Okay. It's like, move along, we have minutes, and we have our April eighth and the May second minutes. And I did, we'll make a comment. At the. April. Uh, minutes, uh, we had a vote on the area planning commission. Uh, Amber needed funds for consultant fees. If the vote was seven oh, but after the vote, we realized that. Part of that was funds for Gen X and Kelly even said she would not vote on anything with Gen X and. But the vote would have still been six oh, so instead of revoting on that, we'll just make it in there that. Kelly realized like that. Afterwards, that was the vote that she shouldn't have taken, we'll not take any more of those on Gen X. So we'll just make that as a notice. The most of the change, so is there anyone have any additions or corrections to the April eight or May second? There is no, is there a motion to approve? Second, all those in favor? Except. Okay, order reflections, uh, there are motions to acknowledge the report reflections for the ambulance clerk health department. For the sheriff for April.
Yeah. Second.
Definitely second, all those in favor? Okay. Review and acknowledge the treasurer's bank reconciliation month comparison report for April. And board their motion to acknowledge those. Um, second. Yeah. Dale, all those in favor? Six seven. Preview and acknowledge that clerk's monthly reports from March twenty twenty-four, so motion to approve. Jeff, second, definitely. All those in favor? Attic, a couple of library board appointment, is this a reappointment?
When you think. They proceed then the one.
Oh, that's a.
No. Yes, three hundred percent.
Okay, so their motion to appoint this handsome to the. Were June first, twenty twenty-four to June first, twenty twenty-eight.
No, she's the next.
Second.
Also.
Definitely, all those in favor? Six seven. Okay, salary ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten amendment. The. Changes that we made for the for the extension office in county highway. Should you approve that?
Are you in motion?
Um, all those in favor? Six seven. Okay. Uh, this, I'll assert requesting permission to pay four hundred and fifty dollars to the art funding board employee two oh two one nine oh. If the grant achieved. Oh, these seven, these nine review and conference call in favor of remainder name and voice of the budget. Help them to ask your little six one dash four three five zero amount, two thousand six hundred for the draft. Inter local agreement based to the standard.
I have a question. My question is, the meaning tonight is to discuss where we're at in all these projects, and this is part of. I thought was gonna be that conversation. If we're trying to get a handle on what is being spent and what is projected and where we're at in the grand scheme of things, should we be voting on any? Payments for anything right now?
Good question.
We made a motion the other night that we were paying though. But so far, right, but but I don't think waiting.
But that was on the way of that motion, this Ritter is the one who is consulting with the nine one one, so.
He's already drafted the inter local agreement for renewal and. The um.
So we need that regardless.
So the. They meant that that's the mountain.
And has standard operating procedures, they kind of updated those. So that is what they want completed, if I can pay all of that.
And we need the, we need the inter local agreement.
Yeah.
It's it's a foreign county now, there's, they were supposed to find it. Last commission meeting, I have the signed copy, so our commissioners, yeah.
So this and then with.
It's not. Except.
So this is the. And the Ritter is, to this gentleman, I believe, used to be the state director.
For our manual.
Kind of how I'm dying. The new nine one one, so. So their motion to. Pay this.
And if we pay, we get the motion.
Alright. I'll make some motion to pay this Ritter.
Is that everything to everything?
Four hundred and, or that. Yeah, that's four hundred and fifty plus thirty.
Or something.
Um, made a motion, third second. Yes. Yeah, second, all that in favor? Six seven. Now we got amendment to the.
Yeah.
Um. I don't think I would finish one, but I I wanted to discuss that if we could. Um. Doing my, doing all thirty and like that, it all finished. But we need to appropriate. If we not appropriate, obligate. Four hundred, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty. Yet the town goes broke and not use money that we pushed towards them. So that. Is basically showing back to us, so that's an extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We get has not used dollars at this moment, does not take in back that amount. So if we can. Appropriately that obligated. Change the plan, um. Ben McNabb at the commissioners meeting said that maybe the committee, which is. You, Brandon and I. Sit down and decide if we want to go towards the N X.
Okay.
Whatever, and I know that's. On the table.
Able this amendment.
I have a number one.
Okay.
I just forget about it, how do I have to give that back?
No, you don't want to give it back, and I know we have until the end of next year to spend it. But it has to be appropriated by the end of this year, you're right.
Yes.
It it's. Obligating, obviously, that's, that was the big thing in their government, but. Because we actually have it appropriated. In our thing, that we have to be in the plan and obligated. Kind of like, we may have kind of like a. By painting county of money or something, that's what they're talking about, obligations. So I want to say something, sorry. For any, we really need to get that. We don't.
Yeah.
But it has to be sent. On the twenty-sixth, December. December thirty-one, twenty-four obligated, December twenty thirty-one, twenty-sixth. That bit, gone years, yeah.
Okay, well. We can do that, the G meeting. Got transfer check, the match on a bridge inspection brand. Uh, what what's, which bridge is two oh two?
We've seen that, I guess, still.
It isn't here.
I think it's still on.
Okay. So. We just made the transfer.
Yeah, it's, it's basically just for the legal purposes. The money is in Cume Bridge, but state of council put out a directive that we get. Move that money. To that, and I think it'd be easier for the highway department and my office.
Okay. Do we have a dollar amount?
No, not at this point we don't, um.
Okay.
I think.
Information that can move it from the line of spec.
And that the bridge is going into block.
It's the bridge that's stone block.
Right.
It's, it's in the works, I don't. I think this is another one that's definitely returning behind. If there is. They're not within, I think, system level.
Is there a motion to um. Allow, I'll need to move the funds. The second. Thing all those in favor?
Who made the motion?
Okay, he's the next. Six seven.
They just. Back with all of them.
Yeah.
Uh, they'll probably need to enter this.
What?
Still broke in the using.
They did use it?
No, they did, they did.
I think. They had shut away until. Situation where they can use that fifty thousand.
Was it project specific or just?
Yeah. Well, it was like what. The things that we want to sue to. This is a lot, so it would have to be that hundred fifty thousand would have to be the room between the measures and the capital groups.
Something.
Okay, uh. Come on, got department head reports, but I'm gonna. Move down, because. Jenny kind of got messed around on the health department, we we had her down this morning, then they have to move to the evening, and then. I got agenda, I brought them back on for. Morning, and we met the other day, and and she said she was done in the evening, and. Thanks, so. So I. Kind of been messing around, and you know, let's see if you're.
Yeah. Before we were talking about HFI funds from last year, we had that discussion last year, and we opted out. Um, I will say that, um. I don't regret opting out last year, it just wasn't a good time for our department. And then four a year later, our department progressed, we paged bridge movements, um, in this last year. And we are back to getting those HFI funds, whether we want to opt in or not. Um, you know, we have a lot of things in our department we can do, what we are asking from our department. Is uh, to stay budget neutral. Um, for, to keep our, maintain our budget as a three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Um. In October for twenty twenty-five. And then use the HFI as an additional program. Um, to any hands, those programs can improve the quality of life in our county. Uh, today we have a ton of warmen, um, Sheila Paul and Richard Smart with here, um, just to help, um, explain or answer any questions that you have. Regarding to the buttons. Um, so I have Heather here, I think he has a presentation for you.
Not a whole presentation, just a. About to give a general overview of the program, so title one, uh, works the devil's days on with local officials, primarily cities and counties. Um, so just to give you an overview, Health First Indiana, two hundred and twenty-five million. Fund for all public services globally. One hundred point five million over two years. Fourteen million over two years, which was the state had been providing to every county in the state before. So large sort of investment. Um, it's an optional program, uh, that's uh. That's having one that's in basement counties voted, what, off end of the program? But no, um, no mandatory. Join. You can say, so basically eighty-six counties opted in last year. Eighty-nine counties this year, uh, so just a couple left. Love to get you all on board, but wanted to talk through that and discuss. You may. Some things that the funding could be used for, basically there's program that's for you all. And that you can tie back to the service. You could use the funding. The the key here is, and they're. Give what you want to use this funding for. It's a thing like lead case management. If the county. What? Young is number eighty in the state for like. Just a couple of examples, what areas of focus that you all choose as county. Decide what to put this funding towards, so not to stay, not to. State Department, but you can decide. So a couple things on the funding, specifically, um, you all have been receiving about three thousand dollars to. Uh, from the state, from what we call the legacy fund. And as Jenny said, when you all opted out last year, that's the amount that you received, forty-eight thousand. Uh, this year, if you opt in. I should say twenty twenty-five, you opt in, you'd be receiving around three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Uh, that year, um, that would be the state portion, and then you all went for a match. I think the first year, the match would be. Jenny, it's a three-year. Of the last, uh, three years that you've been of your budget for your role. So that would be a match, basically, we want this to be a partnership between state and county. As opposed to all state or all county. We realize that this big amount of funding. That state still provide themselves, so the state wanted to set up. And basically said, we're providing you all the funding, you all give the direction on. A couple, a couple other things, uh. The intent of this legislation, what is to do with expand, was first to. We have a lot of public health issues in our state. B city, smoking and tobacco. We're big, this state. And we want to invest in all of that. Not state, but county. These you all know is best for your county. Basically, we, we would. Continue funding your. Current budget. And using this on top of it. To enhance and support the services that you already have. Also the standard of service. So that we can have meaningful impact. In that, yeah. So that's what. Just to give a little. Thoughts. Wanted to hear from you, if you have any thoughts, any issues, any concerns?
And the question on your turn, how much are we going to be going?
Again, that is a formula that I do not even understand, um, but I'm sure we can, either Rachel could talk about that, would you?
Yeah, so the funding is based per county, that means it's twenty-six dollars per person, and then depending on your SBI, federal designation on. Um, income, health, you know, disparities, um, could increase your funding more or depending on your expectancy. And if the county county does have a lower life expectancy, it increased your funding, and that's how we came up with the original formula. It got a little bit, with our initial funding act was for two hundred million dollars, or each year, and it's a hundred and fifty, so everyone's funding dropped proportionally. Based on that fact from the state.
Um, the reason I ask is because we're in a county where it's a desert when it comes to. Healthcare, um, we really don't have a lot of services in our county, and I look at Hamilton County. Or Marion County, who has a host of availability to them at some of the greatest hospitals and doctors. And to me, it seems a little lopsided because they get a lot of funding. And they have everything available to them. And counties like ours gets very little funding, and we actually, it needs to flip flop. In my opinion, because I think we need to have more health services, or help the people in our communities. Like ours, who is a desert, so I just wondered how you came up with.
Can we lose any grant funding if we did it?
Well, we won't be.
You bet.
Um, the other thing to keep in mind is, uh. With the HFI, we currently get a school health aid on, on grant, and if I understand correctly, that will disappear, right? Yeah, it's disappearing either way, it will, we will no longer receive that. Um, in addition, um. Our current budget at three hundred and thirty-one, that we are eleven fifty-nine budget, that just means your salaries and operating expenses, that does not cover any of our. Um, any programs that our department has, it's either from the state or to the hall of theater or donation, um, program. We just currently have the baby shower, um, a month ago, and that was to provide, uh, community resources to our families, our, um, pregnant mothers and, um, young family. Uh, we paid nothing, our county budget paid nothing, it was all donation, and we were volunteer services, um, and we have thirty-one. Um, so keep in mind that our budget, our current budget of three hundred and thirty-one thousand does not favor that in our place. It's from grants that we should give. It's a thing that we add to that, it's from grants, so, um, you know, that's one reason why we're asking to maintain our current budget. At three hundred and thirty-one and not supplement, use the HFI money to supplement or, uh, you know, use. To 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 change up.
So clarify, since that was my question, you had started keeping that budget at three thirty-one, and then he mentioned three thirty-seven with a match, so. What else, what our obligation is, what if we want to be one of those to that? Okay, I mean, sure.
Sure, okay. We, we get it, eleven sixty-eight local health maintenance and twelve fix, which is. Global health, let trucks be down for me, you're saying whether we opt in or opt out, we're not going to get those for next year?
If we opt out, we should script it for like the primary records.
Both of them or just one?
So the funds are combined, and so we should only have one left. It's the left, and the all first, that's the original one, you trust that, and I.
So you, oh, you.
We, we.
Eleven sixty-one, all that money will be, it will fill it if we opt. If you do not opt in, right, okay. So that.
Which is.
Which, well, uh.
Seventy-one, it will be on one.
Eleven sixty-one, if the combined, the bucks to the.
Forty-eight thousand.
Which the lemons, one of, almost fifty thousand start the year, and the other one have. Almost ninety back. Which, if we opt in, we won't get that, you know. Then we start there like three years. New year, fun, the way it's funded in over three years to to close up. But what the. Three hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred is if the county opts in, this will get state. And the minimum we have to match is eighty thousand, three thirty-five. Jenny, the health department would like to speak to that just. What it is for this year.
So that eighty thousand.
So that eighty thousand, that is incorrect, that is, um, that was, I think that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it was confusion earlier. The first year county opts in, they have maintained an average of less than four years, some county would have to have the average of twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one. And then the second year, the county is allowed to drop down to that twenty.
So is that year twenty-one?
Twenty-three, twenty-two. Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, okay, that's what I did. And I have to come back to. Is it the certified area, is that clear? For the certified area?
It's about eighty thousand. But Jenny would like us to be, the budget is the same, and use those funds. Um, but so it will be the old board's decision, but they have to make a decision by June first, what they're going to opt in. Does your board vote yet?
No, they're waiting on this meeting here, they've made, waiting on the decision.
Yeah.
As far as the budget, um, because. I mean, the one thing to keep in mind is if we don't opt in, we're still coming in in October with the three hundred and thirty-one, initially we were, we were going to ask for some with the increase for installation. But, um, I understand that there's some financial uh issues in the county, and so we probably committed the three thirty-one of our, our current budget for twenty twenty-four. Um, so keep in mind that if we don't opt in, we're still gonna have to, we're still coming in with that. Um, so, and that's, yeah.
And that was. What's eleven fifty-nine?
That's again, health fund.
Yeah, that's what we collect on tax, to run off. It, you know, has a healthy, but we've had the tax rate, be- because of. The health department having a healthy fund, we, we lowered that and put the extra money into human capital development. So we could build that fund up, so now. If I believe, it's only going to cost about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. At the three hundred and thirty-one thousand budget, but. Seven years worth of money in there to subsidize. So we can build that. Our brand new. Tyler, you're a long time, been governor, a staff member, and we won't hold that against you.
Talking to Jennifer about this, that story has called me about. It, eighty-nine, that wouldn't have been ninety-two, can't be wrong.
Well, and, and, you know, I, a year ago, I was for opting in, and then Jenny and I, she gave her concerns and.
Yeah.
We, you know, they were only going to offer us, what, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand that first year, and. And yes, exactly, so I think people even understood why we did not, and that's. The name, the name of the chain, so, but it's, you know, and the that, that other point about that is. The legislature is going to have to decide when they're going to continue it on, so if we opt in, we get it for one year, and then. We, and if we have to bring in an extra, what happens next year, the state does, I would say they're going to continue it.
I'll, I'll speak to that, so, and invalid concern that I've gotten from the annual officials. I think at this point, where eighty-six counties opted in last year, very beginning of the program. Before we realized that there would be any obstacles and roadblocks, and then with the start of the new program, eighty-six, eighty-six counties opted in. Including a few counties that had originally gone down to the state house to testify against the legislation. Even they, after legislation has changed, that benefit them, um, and take, and address their concerns. Even they voted to opt in last, uh, last year, so I think with eighty-six, eighty-six counties this, or last year. Three more, and counting this year, I think we may get, uh, almost every county or every county this year. Um, I think the legislature would see that and see how popular a program it is, especially this current year. Many of these programs need to build the reputation to go statewide like that. To get that kind of response from county officials across the state was pretty difficult.
I think the funding too, it'll be me or KPIs.
Yes, and, um, we had that concern last year about parents, we still have that concern, we don't want to hire someone who definitely let them go in a couple of years. So we have been mindful of that as well, and, um, so with this new funding, we would not. Um, hire someone at this point, but we are looking at a program that could enhance, um, our county as far as mobile integrated health. We would bring healthcare into our county and do income services. So those are things that we're looking at, that would be a contract service, so that way, if the funding were to go away at some point, it's a contract. You know, we do that with that contract, so we're looking at things like that to enhance, um, our county rather than, um, dealing financially. Um, so we've been, we've been cautious, um, on trying to develop a program to keep things in mind of future. So, um, you know, that's, we want to be able to maintain our office, our, for the, the trillions of dollars, and then make that funding. To promote new.
And I did have a discussion with Dr. Hessler, and he said that. That when they do these contracts, it would be on stipulation that it could only be one year. They'd see how it's done, yes, when I, when I met with Jenny, and you know, I told her that. I think it's a good program to go with that, I told her to present her budget in August to us. Exactly the way it is, when we open up. And we will all go by that same. To give us the presentation of what they expend state money from, and what she wants our budget money, and then we make that decision.
So our board is looking for commitment today, before they make a decision, um, because we have to give them, we have to tell the state much in first. And I'm like, it has to be committed by the captain first, so that's the part, pretty much. So we are looking for that commitment today, if we would commit to, um, maintaining our current budget at three hundred and thirty-one thousand seven. For twenty twenty-four, carry over to twenty twenty-five, that's what we're looking for today. And if not, we'll go back to the council, to our board, and, and we're definitely what we're willing to offer, but we're on a. That is for the eleven, do not.
Right, also, if you opted in to twenty-five, you got three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's what they said.
Three hundred and thirty-seven, yeah, whatever they needed to buy, yeah.
You still want me to do that? I'm still looking at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, that's what I'm looking at, and you have to give up something, we're still ahead of the game. That's what. You said, and you wanted, you could still do those. That's still got more faith in the government, that eighty-six B one, that you can, you're not opting in, and it will drop this two years. Say we obviously present the seventy-one.
Do you, do you see a change in administration all night? In, in, in the state?
Yeah, uh, into that, we'll say, uh, state budget, if you buy a new budget, everything's. State whatever, two years, everything that has been in there, has been technically. So I think, I'm pretty confident that our legislators will be able to see how popular it is, eighty-nine counties. And each county is different, and each county had different thoughts about this in the beginning, but again, my. Uh, so I think we would make a statement or, uh, for. Almost every county to opt in, especially those that did not do it the first year, but are doing it or strongly considering doing it this year.
We don't, where we were looking at. Some of the money can't have as, so. I think that should be discussed. We don't have the person to, to run into the closest hospital. Twenty-five, maybe sixty-one. So take a look, yes, not that. Since you're working on it, so, yeah, take a look at that. Thank you, this is major.
My last question is, is there anybody on the council that serves on the board? Or Jenny, um, can you think of any reason why? The both board would not unanimously recommend going forward to do it?
So currently, it's, it's depending on the budget. If we can maintain our current budget of eleven fifty-nine, three thirty-one. They're strongly considering it, outside of that, and then they look at all their, um, reasons why it's going on, and it's come down to the budget. Because if not, we will have to, uh, meet the KPIs that the state is requiring with this, with a minimal budget. You know, for supplementing our HFI into our county budget, well, there increases our programs to meet those KPIs. So then that's what they're looking at, you know, there's one nature that we can, we can maintain the budget.
These funds that remain in the health department, can they be moved to like the clinic?
No.
And let them initiate programs of their own.
Yeah, no, the, the, these health funds, it, it's based on tax rates, and we have to. It goes to that fund, it's only be spent for health.
So we can do partnerships, but, um, there again, we do partnerships and it's making, we're so limited on our partners and in our house. That's, that's our problem, we just don't have government, you know, so we just want to come to market.
Carol, I told Jenny to get a health and hospital or something, come in and.
We're needing a piece of land out at the community center that would, they haven't built, but they're really.
I think. Thing, which the big, the biggest concern last year and still this year is if the state were to pull the funding. Year, two years, down the road, and I think the risk of the state pulling the funding is that nothing changes, so. As long as the money is used to additional services, meaning we maintain a budget, that's where the safety changes. The state does this money, we pull our funding, and we don't do anything new, and nothing's going to change, that's what states would say. So I think it makes sense to keep the budget, but then you have to find a new. I mean, I don't think we'd make a motion, but I mean, I would say that increase would support to maintain the budget.
And, and we have one point three million, and we've got four years of funding in that, adding three hundred and thirty-one thousand. And so we could say we're going to do it next year, and then we can see what the funding might, and see if the programs. And. It's not. We're not going to have to trade anything, because that money's there, and we're going to spend it. So, I'm okay with. I don't want to hear your motion, I mean. To give her, show her, I'm okay with leaving the budget, trying to, for a year and seeing how. See that we, we blow out, or live our financial situation. Financial situation down.
Yeah, thank you very much, yeah, thank you. I'll relay that to the board, and, um, I will see you in touch.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Laura, from Soil and Water. Hi.
Um, I'm a. And Soil and Water, I'm the district manager, would like to buy the work. A grant to write the watershed management plan, and we're looking at the big shiny watershed. Two hundred and thirty-three thousand acres. So what we're reflecting from, um, local government is the letter of support saying that you support us doing that. Um, then the mandate is due June third, the application will be due September sixth, I believe, after the Tuesday after Labor Day. So.
Is it going to match the grant?
Uh, we are not asking for any funds or, or support. And so far, our partners, there's some, uh, goes into Warren County, to beginning of Montgomery County, and those acres are broken down at the bottom of the map. And it's just, um, we want to learn more about water quality. And so that's something that we've all talked about, we talked about being, um, proactive rather than reactive, um, the water that stretches on the EPA's. Um, three oh three D list, which that comes, that can come all from upstream, so we just want to make sure what we're putting in, the water is. Is helping, and then this is a very long process, so eventually we would apply for a three nineteen grant, that money comes from I D M and the F P A. Um, and at that point, we're talking maybe in ten years, after everything's done, and they get all of our cost share to urban and rural. And people in the communities, so, yeah, just for now, we're asking for a lot of support, but saying that you. And I think we set, Jeff, you have attended, um, the mil, there's one currently, the mil, the mil, the water. Manages that, there's one in Kelly's neighborhood, maybe, probably from four hundred or five hundred acres, and that's managed through different counties.
I think they just did a big project up there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one, the one that. It's in the mil, the. They have numbers on. Not trees and. It's in the.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's what they'll do, the first part is just writing the water, watershed management, and, and we would hire. People, and that's who we, we've spoken with. We would talk with her, there would be two public meetings, um, since you're familiar with Milcreary, we can group you in. Um, they, they'll do water testing every month, nine to twelve different occasions within the. So there's stuff over Warren County, there's stuff in Tidley County, a little tiny bit, two hundred and thirty acres. And there would be water testing, uh, twelve months in a row, through those, and then. At that, at that process of done, we would maybe reapply a bigger, like the dream eight to the grand.
So, what is the ultimate goal in this study?
Clean water. Water, so what, um, eventually, so right now it's just data, we're collecting data. There's not a lot of water quality data coming out of that, I didn't have. And I can show it up outside, if you wanted to go and look, um, you could, you could look at that. Um, so, right now, we're just collecting data, we get all of the data, then we apply for, and through I D M, uh, the three nineteen. The three nineteen starts, we start talking in this watershed, and the city of Attica, part of the city of Cushing, Blaine, Sport, West Lebanon. We can talk with urban people, so we can be like, hey, what are we doing, um, with permeable surface? So if this city wanted to come in, and you don't want a bunch of blacktop, because you want it to enjoy the water, you don't want it to run, all, just all run into the water. So there's the rain gardens, and by a swell, we can watch for bakers to do some of, some of those things. Um, they have, there, there are lots of different things you can do with cost share, you can put some money for cost share. Three nineteen, and you heard of the big tiny watershed, so that's a really big deal, they, they started in twenty thirteen. So it takes years, and a lot of gold applying, so, we have, we have time. To offer, so the water doesn't have money, but we have time, so that would be an entire match of our time, and the time of Warren County's.
How long with this, this study?
Year, year, okay, yeah, and then, um, and the data looks good, and it. A year, okay, yeah, and then, um, and the data looks good, and it's something that they want to do, then you could go back. Okay, well, now we want to apply for a three nineteen grant. And then that's a whole different application process, same, it's the same, but it's different, very competitive, and there's the chance you may not even get. Yeah.
So you need.
Yeah, I just.
Motion to pass that we're we're in favor of you applying for the grant.
And what would happen is I would. Do you have a question?
Roger, best.
Thanks for what you do versus engineering, shape you do. For the council, if if I'm having a dog or drainage show, it would help them in the state, it would water quality. These ponds, education ponds, uh, you know, holding ponds will allow lead, nitrate, and phosphate, and much. Uh, not pollutants, but agricultural chemicals to getting into the waterways, to pollinate the waters. Keep that in mind, that's why the medical are replaced, you know, once, they will protect people from flooding downstream and all that, but then it's mostly the waterfall. Their waterfall measures will place that will, I mean, so that's something that will make our, our laws. Something that think is the right thing to do for and people that are downstream problems.
Big, big issue with the milky is. So.
Yeah, just because we have no, we have no drainage requirement. So most first division in here, division to pull water, the blacktop, the roof, it's going to be free. If you had some drainage requirements, if you're holding on. Or sort of a lot of some, on the side, it's kind of. You have to be more, be nervous. It's a, it's a top. Hopefully that drainage go back to what they're.
And like, very, so if you're talking years and years, so. I mean, I I have eighteen more years to spend. We all have time, however, you're getting to start. And our, like, like I said, our spring partners this time are Warren County, Montgomery County, and the Nations. And if you haven't heard from me yet, you may be hearing from me.
So.
With you?
Waste water.
No, I haven't done much with wastewater.
Same communities, so.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
You were trying to find out. And I'm sure the topic here today didn't there, so with this launch, we're doing a lot this.
Uh, we are not yet, but we're able to, yes.
It would seem like we have a big, big time.
Correct.
That's the problem with being.
Yes.
And I think that you saw. On wastewater, you just. Um, everything in power has what's called a natural pollution, a chart of the nation system. And that permit restricts, so you can discharge it into the waterways, so from a from a wastewater, it's actually what these that plant. It should be very much compliant with what these guys need. Um, there are in rural counties, Montgomery County, maybe someone from county, I don't know, any that I have. Set system with the shark directly into the waterways, that loses a lot of life, it's another issue, but those are small home sources. But when you come to manage badly, they usually have a permit, a federal permit of this shard, certain amounts of chemicals or whatever is in the water. People are waiting on destination like or.
They're still being released into the background, because it has to go through it.
Yes, and go through a process, go through ultra bypassing, and then it'll have the sort of creating a yard, get all the back things that they get into water is probably mostly limited for the.
Took a class, like through the sanitation system in the city. It's all that, it could be less.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a, is there a motion to recommend? Dale, is that? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Uh, Carl. They're gonna have a spark in this back there. Uh, a couple things real quick, uh, one of our new, two new church in Portland, our setback, we're not being able to fly. Um, yeah, I'm not very happy right now, um, we were. From what I got. Portland is now using a new dealer, just out of Holland Michigan, they're the new dealer, talk to them last week a little bit, um. We finally figured out that Jeff was supposed to be here, but where it showed up sometime in March. That was not communicated to me till last week. I was also hoping they were in Paintwood, the boxes, I got pictures of last week, they had just come out of Paintwood. So now it's pushed back to sometime middle of the lot. So unfortunately, it's not a lot of work to do because it falls in the six hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty day delivery. Um, the timeframe. And the time, and I'm voicing my concerns, display of the problems that we're facing with this on that, so what he said, I said. Buy them to deliver it to new ones, and then once that happens, working with Dominic City, who is not new, not a work dealer, but they are going to do the removal. By line box, we're probably looking. Possibly August versus September, we have a little over there, sixty to ninety days on delivery. Uh, second thing, we did get approval from the state of Indiana to do a board with the advanced M T box. We will be starting that July third. It would be morning, eight to noon, Mondays and Thursdays. Projected time being done, probably about the end of November. And then I'll have to do all the testing to put you guys to force of. I will have a certification until first of the year. I am working with a lady named Betty Willby, um, she has the work one. She's advised that there could be some funding available to the students. Pay for their books and the cost of everything. So we're working with her right now to get a, uh, an invoice and all that put together, give it to her. To be able to fund that, you know, pay for their books, all that, and and the cost for the instructors, even outside of the family camp. Um, obviously, we drove one there within family camp, we would not be charged, because we're doing it ourselves. So I think it was true. We have taught students outside of going to their clinical time on the days off. We did partner with Purple Fire. Where they can do their clinical time, the reset, and go right at night with that. Test, and then we're working, trying to put higher head on to the two to the year. About Stan. Uh, we're still, there's two spots still open, it's on the lower track. Um, we're only now hoping, we thought the mathematic and interest in the lower shift. Uh, but they moved on and took another job, so the two. Four hours, good, their paramedics still open. Everything else. Getting a little better control on the overtime, yes. As I mentioned, in the last, I think, means a broader concern, I think, remember it was an April meeting. Uh, there was a concern with the the overtime, a lot of that reflects the two. Well, we had four slots open, then two bar medics, and then the two point four paramedic spots. We had to fill the point four paramedic spots. Um, which is that had a lot of the overtime out. Still overtime there, but not, not as much. Any other questions?
Do we know when we're we're gonna need to check for those ambulances?
Soon we get delivery of them, so that won't be any trouble. Okay, they're right.
Yeah.
Probably do like a nice set aside, or we work on that. For the contracts and.
They've been approved, it's it's sitting there.
We thought we could deliver everyone later to the monitor. Carol, do you have a question?
I'm just going to, you're talking about, that doesn't need anybody, or do you already have to be?
You have to be in the least amount of the M T base, maybe. Uh, few within our organization, and then I've got, you know, two possibilities of outside, not trying to, they're interested.
I don't understand why these physical students are.
Now, and I think a lot of it is, is, uh, they're gonna say that. Dale can attest that this is work split. W R C T E, so whether the north region, south region, so what they do is, is they fix with all the vocational programs within. Western Indiana area, so the south region is North Amian, South Amian, uh, Park Heritage and Riverton Park. And then the north region is Fountain, Covington, Attica, and Seagull. Um, south region. They already have a program going up to speak, an M T high school program going, it's actually South Amian, I should. Uh, we have been looking at that program here, uh, for a few years. Uh, one of the challenges that we were to be faced is in order to teach the class, you have to be a certified state of Indiana instructor. So, um, myself, Jason Fisher, who's the director of Benton County M S. We both got our certifications, and we were looking at being hot and heavy until we realized the time it's gonna take to do it. So what we have been doing is we've been building our instructor board. The evidence will allow us to go in and be able to do this. We talked with Craig Newey, who is actually, we're what, still in charge of that W R C T V program. He knows that we're very interested in doing that. And we're hoping to get something going sooner than later. But the challenge is, you know, like, it's the the time. Now, and the people to do it. The north, do it for the state of Indiana, half of the M S instructor.
Dark, he doesn't, can you speak to what I've been hearing, fuckers, so it's. I was just gonna man rock, we should, and it's making it to. Watching, if it wasn't volunteers, gets to do anything, volunteer, well, well, what she goes volunteer to.
So we are insurance carrier for Covington Fire, our maternity insurance, but then our liability insurance and all the others through ESA. Is the name of the company. A representative from ESA, um, stumbled onto, uh, some legislation from the federal government on the legislation, the rules, regulations through OSHA. Um, that they are wanting to, um, change the OSHA rule name. On fire, or qualified games, um, and it's actually going back to the map also. I've not really got dug in to see what it's gonna do to us in the fire. Um, some of the stipulations that they're looking at changing to is gonna make it nearly impossible. For the fires to respond here, but I stay, keep the doors open. It's a huge, huge challenge right now. Um, right now, we're trying. Uh, we're trying to sign the rules and regulations, uh, we are voicing our concerns with the U S Congressman. They need to seriously look into this and make some changes and make it where it's not as strict. Um, on the volunteer side, and there's some paid departments within the United States have said they're not even sure they're gonna be able to obtain to. Uh, one of the things that sticks out in my mind more on the wall was the. Medical physical, you have to have physical done every year, every two years. The minimum P A laws with the National Fire Protection Agency Association, basically that certain rules for us fires. One of the rules is called fifteen eighty two, which is basically stipulates what? The medical physical. And a lot of the organizations that will do it, they follow it, they'll all write to the T. OSHA is coming in stating now you have to follow to the T. I mean, there's no, no, I mean, it's very, very in-depth, very strict, I mean, it's very hard to obtain. This didn't fit for me, Seth, reached out to one of his friends that are on a large park, eight per fire department. When they dug into it, they went to their provider, who was doing the medical. Physicals for them, they thought we can't do. We're not even trained to do that level. And when it all settled down, they were saying, if we get to that level. You're looking at physical that costs three to forty dollars. Has potential to be three to five thousand dollars per person on your part. So there's a lot of things, it's it's very huge concern right now that we're we're. Trying to push back at them and say, listen, you can't, you can't do this.
Oh, you're.
And then, and then, and from what I gathered at meetings that I've been going to is, in effect, there could be, there's some regulations that are not pertaining to us, the M S.
This is, does that have anything to do with what Attica Fire Department has done recently in the the new fire district?
No. Yeah, yeah.
And so that's the challenge of the basement right now, and and I, uh, there is a petition going around that you can sign. Basically, it'd be signed by the twenty first, which basically will slow it down. Because if we don't, then the law will come in, in fact, you know, within the next, you know, sixty days or so. Whereas with signage petition, they give us more time, you know, to pig into it more. And they'll talk to congressmen and say, listen, we can't, we can't do this. The federal agency just overreaching, just like, you know, you know, everything. Asbestos, you know, and all that, it's all about the money. I used to mix that, bet that to put on the steam lines. Easy, uh, mixed ball, you know, braved a lot, probably when I was twenty years old. There isn't, there isn't. It is, and that's the challenge, but unfortunately, if we don't. Boys are concerned, uh, we can rule out what we understood from this guy from ESA, if we had not started. They can start and push them back, back in January or February, if they did not, the law would have been in effect like March first, February, February, March. Now I just would have known it until it was published. It's kind of been, got quiet, they tried to do it back in two thousand and fourteen, and they kind of got squashed, now they're bringing it back in. And then y'all, remember? Tina, do you have anything?
No, I'm good. Exactly, I think however, system. Um, they are working on. But they did a lot of the training, the chain, or they're gonna, I'll be a. Our training for this next week for four days, and then they're wanting to, to come live on the twenty ninth and thirtieth. And that's only if we have everything in the system and all this training, so. So they're pretty good about working on that, and they're pretty good about making sure that we're gonna know what we're doing before we blow the switch. So it's exciting and scary at the same time, but it's gonna be a great. Great system, we're ready all the way, and those are the open approach to. The best extension is.
About the Warren County reversing as a part of this policy equipment? I haven't seen the inner. Agreement, I don't know, is it covered in that? It's, so are we getting any money?
That I don't know, um, I have emails out, I never talked about it, I don't have any straight answers on that. All I do know is, all I can tell you is that the little entities. They will, they will be built for just the portion of their N D T and for, um, some maintenance, it's one of the yearly, starting twenty twenty five. So, um, I talked to Barry. I realized that I thought I had a hell with the nine one, the contract for half of the Warren, and that was not to their hands. So Barry is the one that had done it, and I did advise him that, you know, I felt. That Warren County definitely needed to give some more. Money towards us, for the equipment and for all of that. Um, I don't believe that that was good in.
I had the commissioners meeting about the agreement. I had the commissioners meeting about the agreement and as they renegotiated the amount of money that. Warren County was paying and we were informed that we're about correctly, wrong, calling fifty thousand dollars short. They decided they could go ahead and keep the contract as it's two years. This is gonna be the second year. I voiced my opinion about it, that I felt that. That they needed to be paying their share. And remember, did I even mention? A reimbursement amount, so we're going to be short. That amount as well, they don't agree to some sort of reimbursement. Their numbers don't lie. Colleen presented the numbers to them, so. We're in a situation that the contract has been signed.
I understand as a contractor. Part of the budget, I don't understand.
I know it was a lot of work at the alder's office to go do the bill and figure out another two thirds, but. Be able to sign this, sign agreement with a flat rate is. And why they didn't decide, because we don't know what costs, or costs everything, you know, that's.
Medical claims and.
Yes.
And that's hard to play, that's hard to come up with a good, hard, non-feeable is.
But I always find it very sort of, I was at, I would have, but. At least when the specs is cut in half was just a little worth of money or something. I wanted to get through anything. And that does not include any equipment. It's just.
I think we better. Ask about that. This agreement, now the agreement that was just charged in the. Blackberry wasn't happening.
That's probably, yeah, it should have been. It would be logical to think that, yes.
That's what she's just saying, she's figured out. We have three hundred and seventy thousand that Warren County should be paying us. The contract's three twenty-five, so. Glad to bring that up tonight. Anything we can do, our commissioners already signed the contract.
I assume Warren County signed it and that's why.
I was totally, yeah. Very totally, of course, they signed it. And then I don't, I don't think about it, I don't know, I don't know about that. But I did wish strongly and I did save figures about how. Warren County needs to pay more than what we are doing. Um, they use it too. Sort of their, their program as well. Um, so. Yes, yes, they are being treated on it.
I don't understand what they should understand for more money when they should.
I agree. Well, Scott, tonight, you, you keep us on our toes and they're all like, they're winners.
Okay, I did, I got another part timer. And she might be taking the floaters position. So we interviewed nine for a part time position and two were good. And one accepted, the other one has family issues, she can't right now. So I told her the door was open and she wanted to come back here and. But I'm still looking for a couple of part timers to take a lot of the overtime, that's. That's all I know. Any questions, Ben?
No, we're good. Mr. Page is very. I wouldn't call him involved every time.
They have a few questions. Council and. These are some documentations. We can get passed around.
Okay, we've got one.
Okay. Top document there is the original nineteen ninety-eight notification to the county. Shows us a thirty-year closure plan. And that started in January of nineteen ninety-eight. That means twenty twenty-eight is when the closure should be complete, should be complete. On top of that, I will advise, and I took over maintaining landfill. It was not in good shape and the state was not happy with what had been done at the landfill, so I was informed to. Take and not pull my breath. Twenty twenty-eight. But, that being said. Roger and myself have really worked hard at the state, they're really happy right now with what it stands. And continually maintaining and working on it, and they seem to be pleased. So we can only hope that when twenty twenty-eight comes around, they will be happy with what we have done and they will. So when it's closed permanently, Roger and I agree that we will remove the set of testing sites and just clean it up. That doesn't mean that it's done, reinvolved. You'll still need to maintain it, it's just the sampling will not happen. Which, the sampling, as long as nothing happens, somebody has any problems anywhere in the area, then we should, should be in good shape. So you still have to maintain my patent and keeping it lower isn't. Because if you get a lower. That fills with water and water through the trash and creates a problem. So that's what we're trying to stop right now, we've got a problem and we're addressing that problem. As we speak. Bentley's fading out there, cleaning it up, add order, so we're doing it. So anyway, that top letter, that's what that letter is. Then, for the council's information, the next letter is. What we, what we have, was supposed to have. In a fund to, because it was figured out, I used a formula, figured it out, that's how much money was supposed to be in an account. To maintain this landfill. Uh, we didn't do that, County didn't do that. I worked for the state and we came up with formula, they have a formula. We just have to show that the county has the funds available. To do what needs to be done to continually maintain landfill. And that falls on the order and President did it before, Colleen's been doing it and they, they've been happy with it so far. We proved that we have the funds available to maintain it, we have a, you have a budget for me right now that we use. To maintain that and there's been no problems with it. They seem to be happy, as far as I know. So that's, that was that letter and it showed where the funds were supposed to be there and that's why we have. Pass that up now and why we're maintaining it. The next one, I think the next one will just put over, uh, just explains a little bit about modification and, um. And what was being done. Uh, there is a full, the codes that they list there, the I C codes and. If you go into those, they tell you what you have to do with it. Do the closure. So, and that's what I. Maintaining signage, maintaining uh, clean areas, perimeter fences, lockdown areas, that kind of stuff. And I do all of that, so it's, at the most extent, I will be adding some more signs because I do have. Somebody on those, I'm not there going across country. The last picture, yours is in black and white, I apologize, I shouldn't make it yellow, this is what you're looking at. The two red areas are dark gray areas, whatever you're showing it. Those are the actual landfill and uh, the one that is sort of odd shaped, that's the north. Land, that north cap. And uh, we have, this here is an old picture, it shows, that's a picture of a parcel that the county owned. And we have. Decorated engineering resurveyed it and we shrank that down to just. So the landfill just consists of the thirty-two acres, isn't it? Thirty-one some acres, but it's just those red areas, it's not the rest of it. The rest of that area. Uh, also you can see the building down on, if you're looking at the map. Uh, there's a little building in one corner, that's solid waste, the recycle center. Also the E M A building, that parcel is separate now by itself. There's also just to the north of that uh, building, a whole big area there has been sold off to the I P A. Where the solar, people are putting in a little small solar farm there, so that doesn't belong to the county anymore. Closer towards, it's ten acres they've taken over, closer towards the odd shaped uh, reds of the north cap. That is a borrow, if you see a discolored area, it's water that's sitting there. We borrowed dirt from that area to redo both the north cap and the south cap. Uh, so we borrowed area from there, also to the far north, both of the uh. North and south cap, that area up in there, we borrowed some dirt from there, we still have some more. Which we are allowing, dirt from there to put all the low areas on the cap right now. Which makes it nice, we don't have to buy dirt, we just go and haul it, and, and add it to the landfill. So uh, the one thing we're short of. Uh, once you take, there's not so much topsoil, then you run out, so uh. We are probably at some point in time, Darrell Bellis explained to me that we might have to. Purchase some of the tops. So, which, we'll see how that goes. Right now, we're good, so we're gonna have to work. And that's all, all of it makes. We shouldn't be looking at any additional funds, uh, given that nothing goes wrong. Anyway, and that's been, we saw, we have divided, surveyed, so that we're just. Only dealing with the landfill as a. Piece of land.
On the east side of the pictures. At the east, or those are just waterways.
Correct. This low areas uh, to east, east, those funny shaped, and they just redid those. They just, uh, that farm, he took all those tree lines there and stuff, he took all the tree lines out. Water, grass, waterway, drainage areas, and they, they cleaned them up and they blanketed and everything, under aspern and stuff like that. So uh, just so that the council knows, and this all falls under the main, is what we're doing. The south area, down here at the far end, the yellow line is, that is a, uh, also a drainage area and right about in the middle. Is where well number four is. Readings, and to the east of that. Is that, that ditch is blocked, there's some trees down and. Fully drawn in there and stuff, we're gonna be addressing that and trying to clean that up here shortly, to get that water to flow there. We always want water to flow away, we don't want. So that's gonna be a problem. The rest of it, we've addressed already and it drains pretty well. We don't have any problems. The area to the north, north cap, little wood there, it's be there, that is called wetlands. And that butts up right next to our landfill and wetlands are really hard to deal with. Uh, we had to really toe the line, and we did the recap on the north cap. Roger had to get this section, there's been stuff that we stay away. And we have, and we've got a roadway in there now, they just redid the roadway to make it a little more secure. So, or I said, the state's happy with what we're doing. In good shape there.
That area, when we negotiated with I L on the wetland area, because we had to push a little bit of the wetlands. We agreed with them that we'll keep that area as a water manager. Main water manager, just to become a wetland, we were okay with that. It's useful ground, it's supposed to, should save this ground, all kinds of beauty. But it's everywhere, it was true, it was anything that was good under the, they left in it. And it's focused through our existing wetlands, so it makes sense to extend that one in that area. So that area, Greg is allowing control, it's not holding any, any, in that. Home area, it's kind of just like.
That's where we borrowed the dirt, it's down low and very. Every once in a while I get some. Water down there, that else, so much tension coming.
Any questions? Thanks very much.
Everybody want to come out anytime, let me know.
Anybody else? Okay, so our next meeting will be.
Quick question, one thing that we get on meetings from the minutes from April. I'll tell you what I'm gonna leave, but we're gonna have him develop a memo about. Use in comp time and rules, overtime and just just. Did that, seen that. Yeah, maybe we can. Another thing too, I got the letter on the good tab with that. Do you guys want to make any changes this year and change the. It, it's been a long time. I'm just gonna go change it.
Uh, so then um. Then the next meeting is Monday, June tenth, we have our point meeting tonight at six o'clock. We what? And then we, Toby, we will be here today. You gonna be here yet?
We're making everybody.
It'll be a long day.
Did you see the six? I didn't know. I don't think I made a report, I misspoke.
Did I did, I read a report last night that. The state tax revenues for last month were in twelve percent from what they. Were expecting, so.
Tighten your belt.
The next meeting, but they do the budget two years, so twenty-four and twenty-five. Next year, they'll be twenty-six, twenty-seven, so. Be some change, and we have a new governor.
But with the annual council meeting, the annual council meeting.
Uh, I guess. Our whole thing.
Same place, yes.
Anybody have anything else? Not all, all that, we'll meet tonight. Okay, so there are. Okay, thank you very much.